Welcome.
Ready to rock and roll, gentlemen? Ready? All in one. Okay. Are we recording?
Are we recording?
Yeah. I'll go ahead and tell the board supervisor, we need the order. Well, everyone, and first order of business, I have to invite David Gomez to lead this in the play. Let's introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Gomez, and as always, if you please mute your phone, we appreciate that. Next order of business is called the public. Is there anyone that'd like to address the board and call the public? Daniel, please.
Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Daniel Cervantes, President. I want to extend to you gentlemen the happy year to you. The county of the day, but you tell me, Green County did not. County has other holidays that closed. Also want to extend the happy Father's Day to you, to the children of fathers. A director is a father, the county attorney is a father, and then his assistant. And to Sonia, the county sheriff, and to all other our Father's Day. More here, I finally was able to obtain a bicycle, so I don't have to walk the two or three mile distance from my house on Quinn Street, so that helps a lot, really helps. So, thank you for letting me, Chief, send you the happy Father's Day.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Joe Joe.
Good morning. I'm putting my hat on today for Green Lake County Chamber of Commerce. Just a reminder, this evening is the Chamber of Commerce Minister at Valley Club beginning at five thirty, I believe. They're doing grill, burger, and pop dogs and so forth, so I'd really like to extend an invite to all of you, and hope you can make it.
Thank you.
There are some things, one was on the YouTube channel right now, meeting. I had a meeting last meeting early, unfortunately I got lost today, but when I left early, I went back and see what I missed, I was about to go, and that wasn't on there. So I know there's still some things being worked out, just wanted to point that out. Your meeting was there up until right when the budget session started, and so then all of a sudden it stopped right there, no budget session started. So I caught most of it when I left, and there was some, I don't know, people that asked about seeing that. It was seen on YouTube, it wasn't available, kind of like you still have access, will it be uploaded and put back on there? But anyways, I know it's still, and I'm getting right down with all that going on. Another thing was this past weekend, hopefully you're not chairman, the moment ago, I saw you had a great time, I saw you not throwing the cloak, you look good out there, so all the classes that were out there, saw a lot of people, and it's good to see it in five years, the whole school reunion, it was a great weekend. We had a few people out, we had two deputies that graduated from the academies, they moved out, worked that event, and see how it went. So it's overall just a great, great event, festival weekend, and it was a good weekend for everybody, if there are any issues, problems, or if you go see it, so.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, yes, just Derek, if you could, you know, relook at that upload.
Actually, it's not there. The board's direction, we did not record nor broadcast the budget work session. We've planned not to broadcast the budget work session today as well. So it's what was recorded of the regular meeting is up, and it's up on our YouTube channel. But we turned off the broadcast at the beginning of the budget work session, and that was our plan to do so again today.
Okay, so. So called the public, we'll build an agenda item two, the board supervisor convene as the board director, the Green County Public Health Service district, and will we convene as the board supervisor following consideration of these items, a consent agenda.
Will the way of consent, both of them.
I'll say that. Okay, we have a motion, second, discussion. Hearing now, we proceed to vote. All of you in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. We are now convene as the board of supervisors, the board supervisor convene as the board director, the Green County Flood Control District, and will we convene as the board supervisor following consideration of these items? A consent agenda.
For more than we approve.
I'll say that. Here we are, a motion, second, and we're in discussion. Seeing now, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors, and we will vote to agenda item four, Mr. Senator, County Sheriff.
Thank you, Senator, being kind of shared. Yeah, definitely experiment. It might have been hard to see on the scan document that I was saying, so we'll pass it out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what, see, this was Commander Adaway and I were not at the last regular meeting, we're meeting one, back in early June, we're at the Nigel Conference, Nigel was the national CBL operations. They do three conferences a year in the entire country. One, they kind of hold them centralized across the country, they do the first one out in westerns here in here, they stopped, they were Chandler, this was in Chandler, and so it's pretty much the entire western part of the United States. They honor jail, different staff in the jails. And so you can see here on the, on this day on June seventh, we went to lunch, and there were a couple of presentation awards. The Biden has the Arizona Sheriff's Awards, so every year, they're going to share a sponsor of these set of awards. Attention Officer of the Year, Detective Supervisor of the Year, Civil employee of the Year, Medical Staff Member of the Year, Jail Commander of the Year. On those set of awards, that for Arizona specifically, the Arizona Sheriff's Awards will be sponsored. And you know, actually, one couple of these, I left, we did have a supervisor for that one, as well, sergeant in the jail. This year, the jail commander of the year did go to Tyler Adaway, and so after that was brought up, I was actually at the jail commander meeting, Ajax, and I had a video for jail commanders, and coach me, talking about what a great job that Commander Adaway does, the correspondence he has with them. He will emails and constantly keeping them abreast of things, he's always looking at the current law, the things that are coming up. So, Commander Adaway, already seen that award on June seventh, it was already presented there, they had record attendance at this. She'd been a pack of dead, and that Commander Adaway already received before, but I'll go and have him come up here and see the word again, just present that. You already see it once. Pretty neat, kind of hard work, he really is, he made big strike in the jail. Along with that, and the second set of awards they do, there's a few, there's the sheriff you saw in the jail con, the jail conference twenty-three. The Western Regional Corrections Professional Awards, so again, this is the western part of the United States, have these awards, there's recipients from all the states at that point, there were recipients from other states this year as well. They also have the Nigel accreditation award, people have been accredited through, brought this path here. And Nigel certification, and then the executive director award, which goes to their attorney, who set my paperwork that year for them. But under the jail con, the worst in the entire western region, there's three awards there, the Civil employee of the Year, the detention facility innovation, and dedication to excellence. And under those three right there, out of different states, Arizona was selected, and beyond that, Green County Detention Facility. And I attribute probably a lot of that to the under award, jail commander of the year award, Tyler Adaway, who's done a great job with a lot of things. Take the father, the executive director spoke about this award, you know, even if they've been working before, they seem to the structural plant, right? You know, knowing that it's been a process they've gone through for years about these replacement or revitalization. But in admitting that, so many innovation that's been able to happen there, and Commander Adaway being able to take on an academy setting, which is very difficult to do, and try to make it a pseudo academy, by having still having ET, the physical part, running. I think our fans want to take a running, or ET and start to do best tactics. Doing some of that portion would also be the legal portion of that, which Commander Adaway has covered, he kind of worked this into a new academy structure, which others have taken notice about, and seen about how to do this hybrid academy, and how that's worked so well. Along with some of the policies, the TOTA program that Commander Adaway brought in, a lot of the things that brought the jail up with the technology and things like that. So we appreciate him. Anyways, Green County Detention Facility is one that, one that worked with the innovation. And so Senator Adaway was one of those, said that, and well, at this point, I have better out, we need this as well. I just wanted to point this out to you gentlemen, to the board, let you know that the great work that our deals. We're recognized by the National Institute, that was he's saying, looks at, and very good local stage, and he thinks, professional detention facility, so thank you for your kind of doing.
Thank you. Great job. Congratulations, Senator Adaway. But that would now go to agenda items five, and Chair Puevast, to the dress, and again, item five.
Ben Sander, being kind of shared, this one here, I look at the letter support, the proposed resolution there from Kokaino County, and yeah, I think it's great, I think it's great that you get to sign on that. I know that you've had a lot of embedded interest, still got me seeing you this times, and I know that the committees that you're on, that you speak on that, Mr. Chairman. So with this one, I noticed one of the things, and I looked at it quickly, so I might have missed it, was I didn't see any kind of grazing, I saw timber in there, in the town timber industry, you don't help, it didn't matter, but it is the grazing in there. I don't know if that was something that was collected on purpose, or maybe Kokaino County doesn't deal with that as much. But I don't know if that was something that you wanted to consider, possibly consider speaking on, I know you've had in the past, but since I I did see that, looking at signing on, community support on this, and you know, close bond for it, that that may be something that you may want to consider, because even though it may not affect Kokaino County half, you know, there is much, it does affect your station of base here. So I'm not sure exactly what the, you know, the big scope was, I guess. I just wanted to bring that up, see if they're thinking that Kokaino County, they want to look there, consider that, that is there. You know, resolution, I know it's their resolution they created, it's not really pretty, pretty tiny to dictate to them, but being a co-sponsor, maybe they have a little bit of say, a little bit of take, they're speaking up on that, so it's something I noticed, a huge thing, I think overall, I think it's great that the county planning is speaking back on that, I know this is the first effort, it's ongoing efforts, so appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As where we passed this supportive resolution last year, if you recall, we tried to enter it in sort of mid-season. The NACO policy development process begins at the committee level, and Kokaino County in this instance is wanting to introduce this to the Public Land Steering Committee, which is where these types of things bubble up from the bottom, if you will. And, and as Chairman Lunt knows, because he sits on that committee, has for many years, there are lots of areas from, you know, preserving, I'm trying to, you know, Indian artifacts, to grazing, to timber, to, there's a whole bunch of things that enter that committee. This one focuses specifically on the effects of wildfire. It also is, as we are aware, an issue is becoming more and more prevalent throughout the West. Their language here that talks specifically about putting it in the 2023 farm bill, to be both aggressive in prevention and aggressive on the on the restoration and mop up afterwards. Kokaino County, of course, has experienced devastating flooding post wildfire. The only reason Green County hasn't made the news is because we're a little bit more remote, but post-wal fire, you remember, Black River was soot-filled for months. Fish populations, you know, were affected, there's a lot that goes into that. So my recommendation is that we likewise support this resolution this time. Kokaino County will be the primary water carrier, but I think they reached out because Chairman Lunt has a large voice on that committee, he is one of those that the people seek out and listen to. One of the things came up last year as well, and I think best to address it, is that they would like to use our logo on the resolution, most likely. We've guarded that logo and image pretty carefully, and I had a visit with Mr. Nelson last year saying, hey, don't just assume. And so, but if you would like, we could also have our logo included, but certainly your endorsement on the resolutions, what Kokaino is asking for, and my recommendation, we do that.
Just in support of that, but to answer your question here upon the grazing, it is post-fire, and there are other policies that come that address grazing, but this is after the fires have come, and it's not preventing or anything, it's it's all the flooding and the seal and everything, and so that's what they were trying to address, but thank you for bringing that up. And with that, guys, I, I think it's a good resolution.
It's the, just a comment, I'm fully supportive of the resolution, and I do know that it does focus on fire mitigation and the effects of wildfires. And I do agree that grazing is the big part, and I will be bringing that up in the Agribusiness Committee, so that maybe we might be able to as well, you know, be a supporter of this, or add that.
Would that motion be in order?
I move to be approved of the co-sponsorship with Kokaino County on the proposed resolution in the NACO Public Land Steering Committee regarding forest restoration, post wildfire impacts, and community support as presented.
Would you like to add, they can use our logo, or would you rather not?
I, I, and they can know our logo.
Okay, good.
Because they say Green County. Supervisor. I second that motion. Here we have a motion, and the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing now, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very, very much. We now go to agenda item six. Ms. Jeff Card, County Assessment. Good morning.
Morning, are you?
I'm doing well.
First off, I'm here to introduce you more, lightly more to the ArcGIS system. Chairman, I know you were in my office just a couple of weeks ago, and we were the chief of the map and and support, and going over a few things on the product I think it was, and so I wanted to come before you for your support for a tool that's called ArcGIS Enterprise. And well, we get to that in just a moment. Which the GIS, GIS Enterprise is actually an extension to a tool that we already have, which is our ArcGIS system. It's going to be, it's essential, the ArcGIS Enterprise is a centralized data where it's would be more of like a heaven spoke for all of the departments and the offices for the county to use.
Awesome. It may not show up here, it's on the YouTube channel. Better, it will watch up in the room, so it might understand.
Yeah, they couldn't get us away, so unfortunately, enough of this over there. It's a, there's some problem, but they're, they're gonna have to.
Austin, we may have to present from yours. Want to sit down?
So, a little bit for you.
I'm sorry. That you're gonna have to join.
Are you sharing?
Let's share some files. Oh, it's, yeah.
Yeah.
We've shared. So, okay.
Last thing, you pulled up your. And the people in the audience on YouTube can see it as well.
Only on YouTube. When you're on the YouTube. I'm so sorry that.
Yeah.
GIS Enterprise, we argue.
I mean, and that. GIS Enterprise is a central database, it's an extension to the tool that we already have, known as ArcGIS. Right now, he has such a job as nine-one-one data, I mean, the sheriff's office uses several other offices, the board's office uses our data. Working there every day, tasks they do in their office. ArcGIS Enterprise is an extension of that same tool, we would use our same imagery, it's sort of going through you, however, the benefits of our ArcGIS Enterprise is going to be, it's a central database. So it can be similar to a heaven spoke type of a tool. The mapping and GIS would be available across the entire county, and we can also turn that into a partnership with both of the towns, where they could use our data for addressing, or their rose department, etc. So it would make us a better partner for both of the towns on, on each side of the county. And another benefit is going to be user access and editing rights. So for my office, I would have my department of the scope, if you, of the scope, if you will, and our office would be the only one to make edits and changes, and and our office would only have that right to do that, where if the sheriff's office had it in their department, they would have the only rights to change and make edits to theirs, same thing with the board for elections, etc. And so another thing, you know, we talk about GIS, and you think of mapping and visualization, it can also track your work as well. And it works up and after the peoples. It can generate apps for almost anything. We are almost complete with our app that we talked about now for over a year, for the assessment's office, where people can go to the app store, click on Green Lake County Assessor, and an app will come up on their smartphone. And so that will be another option, somebody could create an app, an app, or many apps for their office. And you can also analyze and visualize data. On our next screen, you'll see the heaven spoke concept of some of the options that would be available to the other departments if they so choose to use a tool. In this, for instance, this visual, if you will, you have the ArcGIS Enterprise, which is a central database, and then you can have the health department, public works, etc., or planning, zoning, sheriff's office, board supervisors. Public, the citizens, we use this tool already for our public facing website. So the citizens of our county would, or other counties, if they were wanting to relocate, or do any other type of research for our county, as well as, you know, the treasurer could use this as well. Some of the different items that people could be using, like the health department, home health, nurse rating, pandemic mapping, so we know how many people would have the illness, etc., subject properties, sewer properties. Public works would be asset management, they can have an inventory of street signs, tollbirds, bridges, etc. And it could be marked on the ArcGIS platform, maintenance, easement facilities. My office, for instance, personal visualization, personal management, public engagement, and nine-one-one data. Something that could also be put into my office as well, is like, we have the wildfire, we did have a another devastating fire that came through our county, we could utilize ArcGIS with another devastating fire that came through our county, we could utilize ArcGIS with the structures that shat for that had burned in the fire. Um, planning and zoning would be fantastic for development, permitting, zoning, roads, road names. Um, we put in a new road name for the county. Be a great tracking tool. Sheriff's Office, sex offenders, routing, crime. And these are just little ideas that we were throwing around of how this tool can benefit the different offices. The board of supervisors, elections, the different districts, policies. Um, another, another way to utilize it. Um, citizens could utilize it by apps, maps, the data. Doing research prior to relocation. I have a friend that's relocating here currently. And she's, you know, using our, our map and so forth from our office. Uh, the treasurer, you could actually utilize it with the delinquent taxes. You could mark and mark on the map, etc. And I'll be, I'll be showing that in just a moment. Um, sample maps if they can be used internally and are available for public information. Uh, in my office, currently, we have maps for our public utilization as well as in our offices. Um, this happens to be Chairman Lent's property in our county, and this is our public facing website currently. And this is with our current tool we have, and you can see some of the layers that the public are able to choose when using our public facing website. And so this new tool would just enhance what we already have. Something that I'm looking forward to would be the coastal fabric because we do have some errors and it's no fault of anybody except we're not on a coastal fabric. And the errors are our section lines and our section lines. And so those errors would be corrected. Are there any questions?
So far. He was on a couple slides back, so. If you get that played, but.
This is just an example of how the tool could be used from our roads department. And it could be color coded like this is where there's minor surface distress. Uh, major surface damage, etc. So it could all, you know, be put on the map. You already have an inventory of what needs to be done, plan, etc. So it would make it, I think, in my opinion, more simple, simpler uh, to go forward with your plans for the current year that uh, cemetery management. I've had several calls in the years that I've been in them. Assessor's Office where the local cemeteries are needing help with, um, where people are placed, a map, etc. And actually, this tool could be used for cemetery management and it would be actually fairly simple to use. Um, this is our zoning layer. Uh, again, zoning layer, very, very simple. Put on there, uh, as zoning is changed throughout the county, it'd be a change in that system as well. Um, elevation certificate for what areas, when people are building homes or, or businesses, etc. You know, something easy to access, fire hydrants. Again, an inventory, really and truly the sky is the limit when it comes to ArcGIS Enterprise. And I use that because Derek and I were visiting about it not long ago. And really and truly the sky is the limit. If you can dream of it, ArcGIS probably can do it. Uh, permits. Another example, delinquent taxes. Um, ArcGIS Enterprise is all of these items. It's very stable. It's controlled access, secure, flexible, invaluable. Currently, we already have the licenses to use our ArcGIS Enterprise. It's already paid for Esri. Uh, but, and we'll, we'll get, we'll get to that here in just a moment, but once, you know, if, if you jump and do a free of it, uh, this would kind of be a sequential of the next items that would happen being the kickoff meeting. ArcGIS Enterprise review of county's GIS environment with the IT department. ArcGIS Enterprise install the enterprise configuration. And they will assist with developing and the live features, knowledge transfer coaching from New Edge. So if we have questions or a department has question, they can reach out to New Edge and get those answered. Uh, there is an initial one-time setup fee, which is nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That is a one-time fee. And then, uh, monthly, the monthly fee is at fourteen hundred dollars a month. Be for them to troubleshoot, they're gonna, you know, troubleshoot any issues with ArcGIS Enterprise components, publishing services, portal app development, perform nightly backups, uh, user access, user permissions, database maintenance plans, minor upgrades during off hours, and then one major upgrade annually. And so today, you know, that is my presentation on ArcGIS Enterprise. It would be a great tool for our entire county plus uh, being a partner for both of the towns in our, you know.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to commend Joanne. She has been at the forefront of thinking of new ways to make the GIS data that her office houses available across a lot of different offices, platforms, and so forth. When she first sat down with me and pitched this idea, it's like you say, your imagination is your limit. There's so many ways to use this in our current structure, let alone the areas we haven't thought of. Um, she was concerned about budget and I had asked her to throw together a, a user meeting often with this kind of software. We break it up. You know, ten percent here, thirty percent here. But we've already budgeted for this in the general fund IT budget, including the setup as well as the monthly payments for the year. Um, and it may, as this spreads out across the countywide enterprise, um, we may simply keep it in that budget because it'll have growing utility over time. But I know, uh, Joanne was concerned about the, the cost, but we've built that into the budget that I'll present later today. Um, I, and I just want to commend her for being forward-thinking and, and seeing the opportunities and, and bringing them to a front.
Sure, yes. So, um, I, I think it's a great tool, especially multi-department, multi-offices throughout the county. Curious, are those other offices within the county, are they able to access and populate that information? You know, we mentioned, one of the things was the, the pavement, right? The, the pavement one where I could see that as a benefit of the roads crew or something when they're out traveling or whoever it is. And they see that this road needs some attention. Can they go into that system and?
They will have this tool. If, if it is approved, then they will, uh, New Edge will come, they will install in each department. Will have access to the tool. Now they will have to create that, uh, let's say they have, uh, they know which roads are the worst, the intermediate
Right.
and the ones that are fairly good. And they can go in there and create an attribute table, which is very simple, and go ahead and color code those roads that are, uh, needing the most work, like I said, the intermediate, etc. Uh, it's, and then you can also take that data, push it into a spreadsheet. You know, if you wanted to use it via Excel as well. Um, however, a map, Excel, there's different ways to visualize that information. It's a, it's a wonderful visual tool.
Yeah.
Pam and I had gone to a conference in Las Vegas last October. And there was a speaker there and he was one of the, one of the engineers from Las Vegas. And they had done a study on how many traffic lights. And they kind of had an idea what they thought they had. And when they were done with the study, they had like a hundred thousand more traffic lights than what they thought they had. So then they were able to use that data for maintenance and put a plan together of the light years, uh, maintenance, etc. Same thing with stop signs and road signs, culverts. They had way more than what they really and truly thought they had. So their asset management, uh, profile was really truly engaged.
Great. So I can see the benefit of, of, of many different departments, offices. I'm kind of curious how they might be able to populate some of that data.
Well, you see, the, I think of the health department off the top of my head, you know, you have whole nurses going from house to house to house to house. You know, it could actually be uh, mapped on the tool and where, you know, their supervisor, etc., knows exactly the entire route and where they're going. And so there's, it's, it's just the sky's the limit. It really and truly is.
Looks good stuff.
So I am today asking for an approval. I'm assuming I
Well, obviously, the, the board would need to approve the purchase of the enterprise software and making the payment. Like I say, we, we do have a budget for the coming fiscal year. Um, so if, if the board gives the green light, we leave it in the budget. If not, we'll make a budget adjustment. Um, but uh, my recommendation, we, for, for what good it does, it's a fairly cheap investment. It, it really is.
Is there a need to put a do not exceed amount in the order?
We could, what's, what's the setup cost?
They believe that the large amount for them to install is nine thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then the monthly fee is fourteen hundred.
I'm assuming that's what you got, the twenty five fifty.
Yes. So.
I don't want to limit us. I just want to verify.
If we were to not exceed thirty thousand, we'll be under that.
Okay.
For the initial, of course, this would be an annual commitment, but initially, yes.
But next year will be less.
Correct.
So to, to, uh, when you departmentalize this information, now, what the sheriff puts in his department won't be on, won't be on top of what you and what the health department. Because I could see the, if, if it wasn't separate, I could see this stacking up where nobody could get anything because there's so many layers that.
Oh, no, no, no. So if, for instance, my data in my, in the assessor's office, not only do I have the assessor's office data, but I have nine one one data. So this heaven spoke will have the enterprise, and then I'll have the assessor, and then off the assessor will have the nine one one data. And that data right there, the sheriff's office won't be able to get into the assessor data. Or let's say the health department data, you know, you have, you have your own data. You would have the, I don't want to call it the access, but for lack of a better word, um, you'll have the central data and it'll be in your department. If that makes sense. So the, uh, board supervisors department will be managing that data and adding, or adding, uh, permission to access and so forth. I would have nothing to do with.
And you said updates, uh, there, there's some updates there and, and then there's one major update. So each department is responsible for the updates. They keep everything current because what happens a lot of times is people go, pretty soon you have all this data and yet it's not the latest.
The greatest.
Greatest.
What we do in our offices is, uh, we have a to make it simple, it is a sweep. So when we have change of ownership, addresses, etc., there's a a mechanism that's in the new data. And so I would imagine that would, it would be something similar to that. Be my.
And that's updated monthly, quarterly.
Just right now, what we have is we have an updated view.
There is the ability, as she said, so, so if there's data that only the sheriff's office or only the board would use, they would only, there may be public facing data as well. So for us, as we example, as we put our roads on the map, we may want the entire public to see where county roads are and where they're not. And so that can be made available to every department as well as a public facing.
You could do an alert. Uh, yeah.
Or it's flooding or something.
Or or, uh, nature, etc. Something in that nature.
But it's simple videos. So, um, you envision, you envision that each department slash office would have a champion or somebody that's trained on, on using this or updating that data for that department slash office? Like your primary person.
What I envision is my art office, nobody goes in and updates it. It's an automatic update. And so that way, if someone gets sick, has a baby, dies, you know, but, but, uh, something is not forgotten. Forgotten.
Right. But there wouldn't need to be somebody in each office who can interface with it to enter.
Yeah.
Their, they wouldn't have to be an ArcGIS specialist, though.
Right.
No. Uh, one thing that I would point out, and it sounds kind of silly, but YouTube has wonderful training videos on ArcGIS. Wonderful. And there's also artificial intelligence out there that if you get stuck with something, you can ask it a question and it's going to just give you the steps of how to do something, even even changing an app and awesome. I mean, it's really step by step. Uh, if somebody really, if they have questions and need to answer it, you know, you're the holder. And GIS is a professional.
I, I, I think it's great. I just hope that the updates do come and, and respond to them because I think it's more frustrating to go in and hope that the latest and greatest and go in there and the information's five years old.
Well, and we experienced that before your tenure and my tenure, um, where sheriff's office hadn't gotten updated in quite some time. So there's, it, it happens. But, uh, you know, each department would be responsible for their data and their manning the data. I know, obviously, I'm willing to definitely help in any capacity that I can.
And I think identifying that primary person, which is important for any office, you know.
Well, gentlemen, if there any further discussion, not a motion would be in order.
Why move to be approved, uh, the ArcGIS Enterprise foundational software for ArcGIS powering mapping, visual visual visualization, analytics, and data management in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars as presented.
Exactly. And motion, the second, is there any further discussion? Here, you know, proceed to vote. All of them favorite motion, please, and keep saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We now go to agenda item seven, Tony High Public Works Manager, Facilities and Park. Good morning.
Good morning. Tony, I'm going to speak, Parks Manager, Facility Manager. Uh, we're Dave talking about the well. We're doing it along with the park. Uh, this is an ARPA project that we had going. Uh, when I filled out the agenda form, it was for the forty thousand, not sixty. That was for everything. Uh, we've had a few snag since then. Uh, when I went out to find the driller for this project, uh, it was pretty difficult to find somebody that would drill in this area. So we found, actually found Western Hydro. Who's doing a lot of the wells that are down in York, have a new house, so. So they called last Thursday and wanted to know if they could set up and start building. So I called Mr. Pierre and got their people that have that done. Uh, so they started drilling on Thursday late afternoon and mostly on Friday. Uh, the original was to go down a hundred and thirty feet to hit water and go a hundred and eighty to finish it off. So Friday they called me and said they went two hundred feet and they got just a pocket of water. Uh, this was located by a reputable person that, that located it, and was part of the drill, not by, and all that stuff. So we're past that one. So where we're at right now is we're at two hundred feet. Uh, our static water is that we're at three hundred feet. We went down two hundred feet, which was on quote. Uh, Mr. Eric, three weeks ago, was another hundred feet for that. So we're at three hundred feet, our static water, that two hundred and eighty one feet. And we need to go deeper. We compared it to the well that was done at the landfill. The landfill well dug at seven hundred feet. Uh, they actually had water at four hundred and fifty feet, excuse me, four hundred and eighty feet where the sandstone level was. We haven't reached the sandstone level in Park yet. Uh, the elevation difference between the landfill and the park is about twelve feet. So we're, we're expecting it to be a So we're we're expecting it to be a little bit close to that right there, but uh will these. Authorization, you know, a little deeper, if that's what you want.
And Mr. Chairman, if we could, by way of background, um we stopped at three hundred because that's the limit of my spending authority, can't go any further. The board had approved this on the Arpa plan originally, um and so uh. I I think it 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 does a couple of things, one, obviously hopefully provides enough water to support the Loma Linda Park. Um and and being able to water a ball field and so forth, uh the others gives a data point for um. Potential housing development in the area, it 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 right now, it's not a very good data point, it doesn't help efforts, but. Uh I did this with Mr. Bollinger about this yesterday as well. Um and he he likewise pointed out that we're almost exact same elevation as the landfill. It's it's point seven one miles away over the landfill from the what place we're drilling right now. The water in Loma Linda is found in those wells are about a hundred and twenty ish feet. They don't produce a lot, but it's very good water, the wells over in Bertie Lee are down to around five hundred feet, they have high arsenic levels. Um but they produce a lot of water relative to um. The other wells in the area. It is a bit of a guessing game, throwing a dart at a board, um we've done our best guess to to pick a location. Um the question is, how much further do we go down? Our original ARPA budget for this was seventy five thousand, the quote came in at thirty, just under thirty two, right?
Thirty two is for everything, drilling, pressure pumps, storage tanks, all said.
And that anticipated roughly a two hundred foot well.
Right.
So so we're a hundred feet past that, um I also visit with our engineer, um. Who, I'm gonna speak for you, then you're gonna correct me. He said I would encourage him to go down another hundred to hundred and fifty feet. Um that would be within, that would keep us still within our ARPA budget. Do you know if they were able to calculate any kind of uh gallons per minute of what they found up to now?
Not so far enough.
Okay, I know when they left the hole last night, the water, what level was it, twenty nine feet? Um which Matt had calculated represented roughly forty gallons.
Forty gallons, right.
Of of water.
Also seeping.
So.
What they're expecting.
What you're talking about is static level recharge is completely different, I mean they. They bail that water and then they they measure how fast that feels, so. Static level, I mean, yeah, you can have storage in the tank, I mean, in the hole, but.
But if it doesn't replenish.
What you want.
That's that that is correct.
That's the point right now, it just has a value. Let me ask you this, on the well logs that uh that were drilled there at the. Landfield and the and the logged, if they're logging, are the stratas about the same, or they find in those stratas very. Uh because that, to me, that'd be important on.
Although part of the only thing they've gotten out of this hole is rock, they have hit sandstone again. At the landfill, they hit sandstone above four hundred feet.
Okay, they also got about eleven gallons a minute when they hit that. And and they went on down further, hoping to hit what they believe was the aquifer that supports Bertie Lee. At seven hundred feet, they stopped, most of the water at the landfill well is is at that four hundred fifty ish.
Four eighty.
Um range.
But it does provide storage for you to go on down.
Yeah, right. And eleven or eleven or twelve gallons a minute would be more than enough to support the park needs. Um. Where at right now would probably be not quite enough.
You know, trying to find waters is a guessing game, but I. You know, if there's water in the area generally, you know, the stratas and that's what I was worried about, but you you. If the other well was all rock until they hit the sandstone, and you said about that be. There's the likelihood of beating the same strat would be. Quite likely, so I don't know, you're gambling, I. I play the card and say, real.
I agree. Yes, so what what makes sense right now, we have on this agenda, we have a do not exceed about a forty thousand dollars, right? Uh the original both was thirty two something, obviously, we've exceeded that. Does forty still make sense, or does fifty or sixty make sense?
I I think fifty or sixty makes sense, I I. Um reach just go down another hundred to a hundred and fifty, I'd like permission to go down. To five hundred, that'd be two hundred more feet, that'd be initial ten thousand dollars. Uh because it's fifty fifty dollars per foot, it's a rotary drill they're using, um. That would put us in what what kind of a not to exceed range, fifty sixty thousand? Like I say, we.
Sixteen sixty, that's what it's.
Yeah, we um we penciled in seventy five thousand in our ARPA project list. So we've got some got some wiggle room in there, um. I've never, I'm not that familiar with wells, and so I get nervous and I I I feel like a a gambler goes to the casino for the first time. I'm I'm very uncomfortable with that, I know that German Lunt is uh lived his whole life in business on wells and so. Um and those who are more familiar say, go ahead and drop down. I do know that if we were to pull the well driller off and and decide later to come back and go down, that's that's not gonna just, that's be a mobilization fee. There may be some fees, they may tear pipe going down, I mean, there's. It's better to do it while they're here than to pull off and come back later.
Well, at the same time, we're in it over thirty thousand dollars already. We got nothing, so.
But we're fifteen.
Drillings are just not really about that. Still, we need a lot of that.
There is water there.
Yeah.
You don't know how much. Now we're just trying to go down to another strata of water to to get more recharge, what we're doing.
Right. And 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 the plan does involve tanks, storage tanks and and so forth, to give us that that storage capacity. But you gotta find water down there to fill those tanks with in a timely timely manner.
Oh. Gentlemen, uh I'm ready, go ahead, and a motion be in order.
Why move that we approve of the drilling of the well in Loma Linda Park using Western Hydro Engineering LLC. In an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have motion and it's second, there's a discussion. And let's say they go down to five hundred feet, what we find. How deep is the one at the uh? If we go down to five hundred feet, we would be at the same level as the one at the uh. If the sandstone is at the same level.
Well, but. The land, the landfill well is seven hundred, but they found the water at four fifty ish, I don't think they found any much significance below that, as I recall.
They were just trying to go deeper than this.
Anyway, okay, uh. If there's no further discussion, uh uh. We'll proceed to vote on the motion, all in favor of the motion, please, and keep by saying hi.
Hi.
I motion passes, thank you very, very much, and maybe we hit. A plentiful amount.
Good luck, good luck to you.
Let's hope by the time Brian Gomez goes home, there's water streaming down.
Watered oil, though.
You know, water's starting to, generally, when you hit blue clay. They say, well, that's the end of the strat, uh we drilled the well, we hit blue clay, we had. Up the amount of water we want, we drill through the blue clay and which most drillers tell you to quit. And we hit another strata of water that was unlimited, so. History lesson.
There you go, thank you for that. That tribute push ever comes up.
Yeah, you know, blue clay, that's right.
Okay, uh we'll go down to agenda item uh eight. Repair.
Thank you, this is our annual approval of USDA Animal Damage Control Wildlife Services contract with USDA. Um this is a partial funding for that position that helps keep predators under control, it protects our ranching community. Um certainly helps in that regard. There's also been occasional interface with the wolf program as as wolves have wandered out of their designated area. Um this is something we've been doing for years, the cost is relatively inexpensive, I think it's fifty five, fifty eight thousand and change. I do not exceed of sixty thousand would cover that, uh my recommendation is the board approve this annual contract again this year. We have budgeted for it.
Any discussion, gentlemen, if not, motion be in order.
Well, we approve of the USDA Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service Wildlife Service Agreement. Uh Animal Damage Control Contract as presented.
I second that. Here we are, motion second, if there any further discussion. Here now, in favor of motion, please, and keep by saying hi. I I motion passes, you now go to again, item nine, uh Mr. Pierre.
Very brief, very briefly, by way of legislative things, of course, the budget was passed state level weeks ago. Um the legislature has not adjourned, and it does not appear they're going to adjourn until perhaps August, and there's a chance they may even go longer than that. Um. They have dealt with pretty much all the legislation that is out there, including the transportation tax referral. They they. Legislature had um. Attempted to pass a compromise position on on proposal that came from the cities and towns and other governments in Maricopa County. That was rejected, uh the majority uh then passed the another one sort of two part thing, which I believe the governor has vetoed. Uh as not being responsive to the needs that Maricopa County governments put forward. There's discussion now about possibly a uh initiative to get this on the ballot, both to take that decision out of legislature's hands. As well as put the funding in the hands of Maricopa County citizens. Obviously, the the concern for us is not immediate, this would begin in twenty twenty five. Um if there's not some mechanism in place to raise a local tax to pay for their. Their transportation in many forms, from light rail to freeways to inner, you know, inner city streets, arterial streets. If that money's not in place, um it will be, there'll be scarce dollars that we had on on transportation. Um other than that, there's not much going on, they they convened um last week for two days, they'll be gone. Until I believe it's August.
July.
Is it, they'll be back in July, okay. Um but there's there's not a lot going on there, I think really the only thing much left that's going on is is the governor's uh department head. They're scheduling slowly for the their vetting process, and that that's about the only thing taking place right now. Um I'll discuss our budget issues uh in our work session.
Okay, uh thank you, any questions, you know, just a comment. Probably four hundred, which you you know, has since that they do, they use their freeways and stuff, and of course. The main. Uh rub with the legislature, they don't believe in public transit and and so they don't want any of those funds used. And that's the reason they're 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 fighting this thing and. It's it's interesting, it affects the the state as a whole, especially the rural areas, but I I just. Uh. It just, sometimes it makes you scratch your head. Why they feel like uh if that community is is the levies of tax in that community, why they shouldn't have a. Should be able to say how that money spent, but anyway, my two bits. And with that, uh we'll go to the calendar, Bianca.
Thank you, um we are on the twentieth. Our last regular board meeting for the month. Um with a board meeting tomorrow and the twenty first, junior rodeo is on the twenty fourth. Um we will have a budget meeting on the twenty eighth at, starting at three. I'm going into July. Our board meeting is on Thursday, the sixth, um due to fourth of July, we're closed on the fourth. Um so we'll have our board meeting on Thursday, the sixth, junior rodeo on the fifteenth, um with on the nineteenth. Um and then there's the NACO Annual Conference in Texas from the twenty first through the twenty fourth. Our board meeting um on the twenty fifth.
Did the board want to move that to?
I was gonna say, I had it, I have a question right there, I don't remember what it was.
It's a travel day back from the conference, most likely, right?
Okay.
Will that be a problem with the Brentzy School starting for you?
Hmm, oh. Well. Can I get back to you on that? Okay, I I, you know, I mean.
We we will, we'll need to set a date by next week when we adopt the budget, because that needs to go in the resolution that is is published in the paper. When that hearing will be for the final budget.
Frank, get out, I appreciate it, actually, it might work out better, but we'll. We'll see. But I'll get back to you recently, I think that's okay.
Okay, and we'll set that next. Well, do at the.
The next week's meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm the twenty sixth, Maranti Schools do begin, we have junior rodeo on the twenty ninth. Um and then going into August. Segal meeting at nine. For Riza Gomez, is that still going on, the Segal?
That's, yeah.
That, oh, okay. Um our board meetings are on the eighth and the twenty second. Duncan School starts on the ninth, I don't have blue yet, I will get that on there, but if anybody knows when they start. Um county managers meeting on the eleventh, Segal on the eighteenth. And that's what I have for August.
Also, I think on the calendar, there was some question of where are you gonna do that, uh?
Oh, yes, um chairman, thank you. If I can uh point out a date on the tw- August twenty first. Um Craig Sullivan is going to be in Graham County that morning, he's gonna present his um. His update for twenty two, twenty three activities for um CSA. He wanted to know if he can come down that afternoon after Graham County and present. As a work session to to fourth.
On the twenty fourth.
August twenty first, but it'll be in the afternoon, he's asking for it to be in the afternoon sometime.
So that would. Would mean that we would change our board meeting from the twenty second to the afternoon, the twenty first, is that what? Or for the morning, and then and expect him to come in the afternoon.
Yeah, but if 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 we were to move our meeting to that day, which which we could certainly accommodate as staff, we could work with Craig on of when that would be. But but I would anticipate we would move our meeting from the twenty second to the twenty first, unless you want to come in two days. We like you guys, come on in.
Well, hey, do it, move it to twenty first in the afternoon, yeah, finally, yeah.
By not exactly when he's gonna come, we either start our meeting ten or whatever, it's just gonna come here. And you know, we have the agenda.
Right. But it's to be double budget.
Yeah, we should have done with the budget, I think we will have already set tax rates in as well.
So anytime in the afternoon, that is okay for you guys.
Yeah, we we are set to to adopt tax rates on August eighth, so that should work.
Um and then I do have one more, um July seventeenth is the deadline to designate the primary um voting delegate for NACO. That's July seventeen.
Yeah. I will be going. Really, yeah, I mean then. Uh that's the NACO end of meeting, the other twenty first, yeah, but I will. Okay, so you're the delegate, if you do that paperwork, put me as the.
Okay.
So I can register my credentials.
Do we have to provide proxy?
No, it's just, you just want. Thank you, Roland.
And and moving the board meeting to the twenty sixth, I'm sorry, July, from the twenty fifth to the twenty sixth would be my.
I'm good with that, I'm good with that, okay. For the board meeting, let's. July twenty sixth. Anything else, you all gone?
That's all I had.
Yeah, do you have anything else?
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to agenda item ten, and on agenda item ten A, the sheriff has asked to address. Again, item A, there.
It's going somewhere with me and the sheriff here. Chairman, we won't stop. Well, the ten A, I was looking at the minutes from April eighteen, on April eighteen, those minutes. The attorney called the public. There's a few people that's told, uh the law, and she convinced Mark and Sheriff Sunder. Uh Sheriff Sunder had key expressed his thoughts regarding a few agenda items on the agenda. Um on the second line there, one of the specific things that I did speak about, reading those, bringing that up is um. On that agenda item, one of that I spoke about. We have all, maybe you don't, but there's a second to set and then I have a four or five minutes. Uh we know the five, it's an action item regarding the special action appeal. I spoke up on that during the. During that moment, and I know minutes aren't be the main and with the word of importance of that people need access, but I'll. Just wanted to point out that. All the uh ones that we view typically, usually as. Not everything said, but at least some specifics about a particular issue, especially this might add a technical point they want to bring out. Mine was back to how much work that cop by moving forward that special action and appeal. And I wanted to make sure I was on record. I stayed, and so I did say it then, I know it's like forty. Um but with it uh being absent from meeting minutes for that meeting, so. Equally, for the sheriff, he he expressed this thought regarding a few agenda items on the agenda. That's and I know it's nice way to sum that up real quick, you know, touch on that issue and then miss that when your official meeting is, but. That's just I'm speaking on it now. I think that's important. Piece of media that I did speak on that said, uh this is stopping the county tax pay for a lot more money. He wants special action for different things, which I can see. Mission there, but anyways, regardless, I might consider that was the meeting, so that that you see. And I know there are to be losing debates, still the flexing of yours, not meeting. Uh but when you look back typically at the Harvard public, then it's there on there was pretty few names and. What's it thought about, even on this particular one, you see, uh there is some specific angle stated, but they covered four or three minutes. I should have had that record again again. Thank you. Thank you.
With that, uh we are on agenda item consent agenda. So know that we have proven some agenda posted.
Also, get that.
Here we have motion the second. Uh all in favor, are there any, there any further discussion? Here now we proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please, can keep by saying hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion passes. Thank you. We will now go to agenda item eleven, supervisory board. Is it? I only report I have is is it's uh still crazy over here at the legislature that I've been in contact with the. Senator Gowan and Representative Griffin and on several different issues and and. It uh. They are aware of us. Of our concerns on on uh this proposition four hundred, like I said, uh. It it seems to be going down party lines, but it does affect the rural areas in that. If if proposition four hundred doesn't go, then all that hurt money that. It comes to us will be sucked up because of the population. Factors in most of the way the money's distributed. Other than that, that's the only report I have. Let's take a a. Just a few minute break and then we'll come back to uh. Again, item twelve and and let's take. Let's let's be back by uh. Nine and eighteen, that's five minutes. Thank you.
This, we will end the YouTube. Previous one session.